It is 6:30, and I would like to call this regular meeting of the Coralville City Council to order. It is December 9th, 2025. Could I have the roll call, please?
Knutson.
Here.
Vogel Zhang.
There.
Quinn.
Here.
Peterson.
Hi.
Goodrich.
Here.
All council members are present, as is the mayor, the city clerk, the city administrator, the city attorney, and several other staff in the audience. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Do we need to amend it?
No.
We're good. Okay. Moved by Goodrich, seconded by Peterson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. Next item, community comments. This is a time for community members to speak to us about items that aren't on the agenda, or items that are on the agenda but are not subject to a public hearing. So I think we have some folks that would like to speak to us this evening. You can step up to the microphone and say your name, and try to keep your remarks to about two or three minutes.
Thank you. Is this on? Can you hear me okay?
It is on. It is on.
I'm Bill Gerhardt. I'm a longtime resident of Iowa City. I came here in 1970 to go to school, work construction to put my way through the university, and then after I graduated, just kept doing construction work. I worked my way up through union politics. I was the local union business manager here, the Labor's District Council Business Manager, and for 14 years, I was president of Iowa State Building and Construction Trades Council. And now I work part-time for the laborers doing political stuff, labor management stuff, and some business development. I was going to speak tonight later, but it's not on the agenda anymore, about the selection of a contractor to build the rec center using the new construction manager risk law. But I'm just going to mention something, and I appreciate the fact that it's not on the agenda, that people can take time to deliberate and learn more about the CMR process and come up with the right answer. But the building trades has been, was part of the coalition that helped pass CMR legislation at the state. Before we had that, all public candidates were forced to take the lowest bidder, and sometimes the lowest bidder meant the person that paid the least wages, the person that had the worst safety habits, the people that used the cheapest materials. So this is an opportunity to raise the construction projects and raise the quality of the construction projects in the industry. So anyway, I'll save my remarks. I was going to give to another date when you actually talk about it, but I appreciate the fact you guys are going to take some time and figure this out. You'll never be faulted for making the right decisions. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to us about items that are on the agenda, that are not subject to a public hearing? Okay, excellent. Well, we will move on then to our next agenda item, which is a proclamation. And this proclamation is for Ukraine Women's Wrestling Day. So I will read the proclamation first, and then we will hear from our very special guests that we have here tonight. Whereas the city of Coralville is a premier destination for all forms of competitive wrestling in the world, for athletes and spectators alike, and whereas the sport of wrestling is an important component of the city's civic pride and can spark positive opportunities for shared community building, and whereas the community has hosted major international wrestling events, athletes and spectators from around the world, and whereas the first instance of men and women's freestyle wrestling competition on a shared international stage with equal billing occurred in Coralville, and whereas the greater community has supported major wrestling events, including, but not limited to, the 2012 U.S. Olympic Trials, the Grapple on the Grid Iron in 2015, which attracted a world record crowd of 42,287 fans in Kinnick Stadium, the 2016 Olympic Trials, the 2018 UWW Freestyle World Cup, the first ever sanctioned Iowa high school state wrestling tournament at the Extreme Arena in Coralville, and the 2022 United World Wrestling Freestyle and Women's World Cup, which was won by Ukraine. And whereas the city and area are hosting the Ukraine National Women's Wrestling Team for a cooperative training session with Team USA and the University of Iowa Women's Wrestling Team. Thus, we make this official proclamation. Therefore, I, Megan Foster, Mayor of the city of Coralville, do hereby proclaim December 9th, 2025, as Ukraine Women's Wrestling Day in Coralville. Signed on this ninth day of December 2025, Megan Foster, Mayor. And we have some very special guests with us here this evening. Take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you know, I'm Josh with the Iowa City Iowa City Sports Commission, and it's my honor to bring and introduce a few of our Ukrainian friends here to the council and the city tonight. We have two great gentlemen here that are team leaders for Ukraine that I've known for several years now, Andre and Andre, so you won't forget their names. I can call them AB and AV. But then, we really have a very, very special guest, which is Ira Kolodenko. Ira is a 62 and 65 kilogram wrestler for Ukraine. She's the reigning Olympic silver medalist from the 24 Paris Games. She's also won Olympic bronze at the 2020 Games in Tokyo. She's a multiple-time world and age-level medalist, five-time European medalist, including three times as European champion. And, I mean, as good as it gets, right? Not even our police chief back here could take down Ira Kolodenko. There's no question. She would throw him. So, just an honor to have them here. Ira's English is really good, getting better and better. But Andre here will just say a few words on behalf of Ukraine, and just how much love the team enjoys the city of Coralville, and what a special place it is here in Ukraine. By the way, he just landed. I picked him up from Sydney, Australia.
Yeah, more than 24 hours of travel.
Fifteen-hour flight to Dallas, two-hour layover, and a two-hour flight that I just picked him up from. So I don't know that he slept, but...
Thank you, Josh. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor, for having us. It's a huge honor for us to be here, to speaking in front of you. And I didn't expect that we're going to get something like you just said. It's a huge pleasure. I'm sure that the team will appreciate it. But what I wanted to say is a huge appreciation to the Iowa City Coralville. Josh is our friend who made everything possible to make a women's wrestling team feel like home, and we started our friendship in 2022, and we're pretty happy that this friendship keeps growing and developing. So it's our third time we're here, and we just hope that we will continue evolving. And thanks to all of you, thanks to all people who supported this journey. I know that there are a lot of people on the background who support in some way. Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you for being here. Go get some rest. We have to go practice now, don't you? All right. Thank you. Okay, on to our next agenda item. This is an amendment to the Coralville Urban Renewal Area. This is a public hearing, and this amendment will add a new business expansion located at 2300 Oakdale Boulevard to the urban renewal plan. And I will start this by opening the public hearing. Do we have anyone that would like to speak to us on this item? Do we have any written comments?
No written.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing. Oh, I'm so sorry. I will reopen the public hearing. I missed you there.
Actually, you want to speak at the next item.
Oh, on the next one?
Yeah.
Okay. No worries. Public hearing is closed. Again, yes, no, it's all right. We're messy. We're a little messy tonight. Okay, no written comments. I have closed the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving amendment number 13 to the urban renewal plan for the Coralville Urban Renewal Area. It's a resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by...
Second. Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or discussion on this item? All right, could I have the roll call then, please?
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And next item, redevelopment and forgivable loan agreement. This is another public hearing, and this agreement would provide assistance for Morrison Weighing Systems to relocate to 2300 Oakdale Boulevard. So I will open the public hearing on this item, and yes, feel free to step up to the microphone.
Hello, I'm Quinn Fedema. I'm the president and co-owner of Morrison Weighing Systems. And just here, I'm here today with my sister, Claire Fedema, who's also a co-owner, and Jordan Heineman, who's one of our key employees. And we're just here to tell us, tell you guys a little bit about ourselves. Morrison Weighing Systems is an original equipment manufacturer of specialty automation equipment, usually related to weighing and labeling for large food processors and manufacturers. So essentially, whenever a large food processing company needs a piece of equipment designed that doesn't quite exist yet, or needs to be faster than what's out there, they'll come to us, and then we'll work on designing that. If you're familiar with the show, How It's Made, where they, you know, get the perfect number of slices of bacon into the pack, or put the Oreos together, that kind of thing, that's kind of the stuff we make. And when that show was still around, our equipment would be on there every once in a while. We've been a family business since 1963, based in Illinois. Claire and I's grandparents started it. In 2016, our grandfather passed away, and that's when I started at the business, working with our grandmother. We all have engineering backgrounds. Claire has a mechanical engineering degree from the University of Washington. I have a mechanical engineering degree. Jordan really went for it. He has an electrical engineering, computer science, and mechanical engineering degrees. And we met doing our final project together at Berkeley. Our business model is that we design our own, we design our own custom circuit boards, we do our own software in-house, we do our own mechanical designs in-house. So all of that's in-house, and then we outsource the fabrication and construction of the equipment to local vendors, and then we bring it back in-house to do final testing before it goes to our customers. So as far as economic impact, 95% of our customers are outside the state of Iowa. None of our customers are within Coralville. So whenever we are selling something, it's money coming in from somewhere else. And then it's just, it's a high-cost business, so we spend a lot of money locally, whether that be with our vendors, or, you know, the various people involved in making everything happen. We have good-paying jobs. We also have a nice apprentice program. So we train people. We'll take apprentices with no technical background to become technicians, and we make it fun, too. We recently have started doing a lot of work in Alaska with Wild Salmon Fisheries. So we say, you know, if you come on for the technician apprentice program, and you make it through the first year, we'll, you know, send you somewhere fun. Yeah, and as far as the building, we're looking to move to 2300 Oakdale. It's within the University of Iowa Research Park. It's been empty since COVID, so nobody's been in there for, I think, five, six years. We'll be renovating that building, and then we'll also be constructing a production and testing addition to the building. And we'll be building that addition, you know, to high-quality meeting the research park's covenants and standards and what's not, so it looks good. And then why do we want to come to Coralville? We have, first off, we're currently on a 60-year land lease in the state of Illinois, and we're coming to the end of our 60 years. Also, we've been fortunate in the last, since 2017, we've quadrupled our revenue, so we've grown pretty meaningfully in that time period. And we have family ties to the area. Our mom got her electrical engineering degree here at Iowa. Jordan's wife is currently doing her residency at the UI, and we like it here. So that's why we want to come, and that's a little bit about us. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you so much. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak to us about this?
You can be next.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Austin Corns. I'm with the Iowa Research Park and the University of Iowa's Office of Innovation. I'm here to express my strong support, our strong support of Morrison Weighing Systems' request for incentives and their, for their purchase rehab and construction project at 2300 Oakdale Boulevard. Morrison is exactly the kind of innovative engineering-focused company the park wants to attract and grow at the research park. They're developing new, high-tech products, advanced engineering applications, and precision manufacturing capabilities at their current facility, and we would love to see them keep doing that here in Coralville. There's a strong alignment of their work with the mission of the park, and they are complementary to the University of Iowa's strengths in engineering, technology development, and innovation. Their location at 2300 Oakdale Boulevard would enable collaboration with the University of Iowa's engineering faculty and researchers, access to student talent, and internship pipelines with the university, and opportunities for joint product development, testing, and commercialization here on the research park. Their presence strengthens the region's advanced manufacturing and technology ecosystem, and contributes to job creation and long-term economic growth. Morrison's investment demonstrates a long-term commitment to the city of Coralville and the Iowa Research Park. For those reasons, we support this project on the park, and we request your support with their incentive request. So I am happy to take any questions on behalf of the park. I don't imagine there are many, but we wanted to be here.
I'd like to ask a question.
Yeah, awesome, great.
Unclear to me a little bit on who will own the building and the property.
Yeah, so...
Will you guys retain ownership, or how does that work?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we do land leases on the park, so we will retain ownership of the land under the Research Park Corporation 501(c)(3). They will own the building and the new building, the addition to the building as well.
So how long is that lease for, then?
The current...
Another 60 years, or what?
The current lease right now that would be passed on to them is a prepaid land lease through 2044. But we would, we're in the process of discussing a long-term extension for them before they would close on the property.
Okay.
So...
So you don't, you don't pay property taxes, but they would on the building and...
That's right. Yeah, and Kelly could speak to this more, but we've worked out some sort of agreements with the city of Coralville back in 1988 on some payments in lieu of taxes, I believe. But, but no, we don't pay typical property taxes.
Any other questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Would you like to speak as well?
Yes.
At the right time this time, too.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Melanie Bemson with Greater Iowa City, Inc. I'm here to share our support for Morrison Weighing Systems as they take their steps to relocate to Coralville. Earlier this year, I was able to be part of a visit to their facility in Illinois, and it was one of those tours where you can feel the company's roots. I told the story of their grandparents founding the business, and you can feel the history in their current building. It's full of natural light, it's surrounded by big trees, and it's deeply tied to that community, and it matters to them. As they look forward to this next chapter in their business, they want to recreate that sense of place with a community with character, stability, long-term opportunity, and Coralville fits that picture beautifully. Morrison Weighing is exactly the kind of advanced manufacturing company that strengthens our regional economy. They've been designing their custom in-motion weighing systems for more than 55 years. Their products support food processing, packaging, industrial clients across the country, and their reputation for engineering excellence aligns perfectly with the strengths we've built across Johnson County. A relocation to Coralville would bring high-quality jobs, deepen our manufacturing ecosystem, and reinforce the commitment to supporting long-term value-added operations. It also advances our regional priorities. We work toward every day, which is talent development, supply chain resilience, and sustainable economic growth. Greater Iowa City is ready to support Morrison Weighing every step of the way, working with the city of Coralville, utility partners, anyone, to help ensure a smooth transition that helps set them up for long-term success. And we believe they would be an outstanding addition to Coralville, and we hope to welcome them into the community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Okay, then. I will close the public hearing, and we will consider the resolution.
Resolution approving the agreement for private redevelopment and forgivable loan agreement with Morrison Weighing Systems, Inc. It's a resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Vogel Zhang, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, I just, you know, this is part of our TIF, and so we'll get the increased property taxes, which is why I asked about that. A lot of these deals or contracts that we've done have been forgiving future, or rebating future taxes, and this is, in this case, it's an upfront loan, I assume?
Yeah.
Which would be given to them at what point in time exactly?
When they get an occupancy permit.
Okay, so after the expansion's done?
Yeah.
And all that. And why did we use this approach versus the, you know...
In working with the company that's made the most sense, and with the addition and expense that they were putting into the property, that worked out the best for this particular project.
And how does it impact our future budgets? That $205,000, will that go into fiscal year 27 budget as an expense, or one-time expense?
It would actually, yeah, it would be a one-time expense out of the...
Out of that TIF fund.
Out of that TIF fund.
Yeah.
And we will be able to take that out of the reserve that's in that TIF fund.
Okay. So it will not have any impact on our general budget?
No.
Any other questions? Okay, could I have the roll call, please?
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, Chapter 160 Flood Plane Regulations. And this is the third reading of this ordinance that would adopt the new flood insurance rate maps, regulations, and processes in compliance with FEMA modeling and standards. Could I have the ordinance read, please?
Ordinance number 2025-1017, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the city of Coralville as previously meant in repealing and replacing Chapter 160 Flood Plane Regulations. This ordinance introduced for third and final consideration by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Vogel Zhang. Any questions or discussion? All right, could I have the roll call, please?
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Resolution passes its third and final, I'm sorry, the ordinance passes its third and final consideration with all ayes. Next item, Rec Center Project. This is a, this is an agreement that would open a fund for charitable purposes to support the new Rec Center project. And we have our Parks and Rec Director, Sherri Proud, here. Let's read the resolution, and then we'll hear Sherri's presentation.
Resolution approving a designated fund agreement for the Coralville Recreation Center Fund with the Community Foundation of Johnson County. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. All right.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. You summarized it very well. We are establishing a non-endowed designated fund at the Community Foundation of Johnson County for the purpose of accepting gifts and to act as the 501(c)(3) organization if we should need that for certain grants that we would impossibly apply for. The distributions would be for the construction project for the Coralville Community Rec Center and Naterium. The fee that is paid from the gifts, or taken out of the gifts, is 1.25%. We have a goal of $4 million to raise, and that fee would equal $50,000 then for the community fund. They receive and track the funds. They provide an online portal to be able to, for people to make gifts through that, provides an acknowledgement and information for each gift, and then with regular reporting back to the city. And then the next resolution, the next piece of the resolution, is to designate our city administrator, Kelly Hayworth, as the person who signs all the documents, and be able to request funding from the community foundation that then be released to the city.
All right, questions for Sherri?
When's the last time we used this process?
We used this process in Parks and Recreation for the Center for Performing Arts.
So it's been a few years.
Mm-hmm.
Did we reach our goal at that time? Do you remember?
I think we did.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the question.
Did we get, did we get to the goal?
We did, yes.
Yeah.
Yes, in fact, I think we raised the goal a couple times.
Let's hope that happens again.
This is an important service that the Community Foundation provides, and there's a lot of donors that will, although it's the same eligibility if you donate to the city, from a tax perspective, there are certain donors and/or foundations that will not give the funds to the city directly. And so what the service that they provide is extremely important for us.
Excellent. Any other questions?
With part of this donation process, could they, could we possibly look at like naming rights or anything like that? Yeah, there'll be a series of opportunities of things that people could have named after them. And I think the other important thing to remember is that it's also, the funds would also be used for Esti Morrison Park, for the Coralville Library, and this whole campus is part of that process as well. So it's a much larger than just the one building.
Yeah, that's one thing I was going to note, too, is that there are other pieces. It's not just the building, but upgrades to the park and the green space in the areas around the building as well, so... Anything else? All right, could I have the roll call, please?
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And we have another resolution for this agenda item. The second resolution is for, is to designate Kelly Hayworth as the authorized signer for the donation fund for the Rec Center. So could I have that resolution read, please?
Resolution designating Kelly J. Hayworth as the authorized signer for the city's designated donation fund. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Goodrich, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, could I have the roll, please?
Goodrich.
Aye.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, temporary access agreement in the West Land Use Area, and this agreement would allow public access to the city's parcel from Jones Boulevard in the West Land Use Area. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution approving a temporary access easement agreement with Colony, Inc. and the Ellen M. Colony Trust. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Knutson, seconded by...
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any questions or discussion on this item? Okay, roll call, please.
Knutson.
Aye.
Vogel Zhang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, Utility Bill Payment Plan Policy. The purpose of the, I'm sorry, I read the wrong one. The policy would outline eligibility requirements and procedures for utility bill payment plans.
Madam Mayor, may I make the motion to have this...
Madam Mayor, may I make the motion to have this agenda item be tabled?
Yes, you may. Moved by Quinn to table this agenda item, could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Canutson, and then do we just do a voice vote? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This agenda item is tabled with a majority voting in favor. Okay. Onto the next one. Memorandum of Understanding. The purpose of this MOU is to correct an error in the final collective bargaining agreement regarding language on safety boots. So could I have this resolution read, please?
Resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between Local 183 Council 61, American Federation of State and County and Municipal Employees, FLCIO Public Works, Parks, and Recreation Employees, and the City of Corleville regarding safety boot reimbursement for its members. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Vogelzang, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. Any questions or discussion on this item? Okay. Roll then, please.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Canutson.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. Next item, Iowa River Landing License Agreement. We have two parts to this agenda item. The first one is a license agreement with Sunny Gray, and this is in the former Skin Body Soul space. Could I have the resolution read, please?
Resolution approving a license agreement with Sunny Gray LLC. Resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Quinn, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Goodrich. Questions or discussion? Roll, roll call, please.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Canutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And for the next resolution, this is an amendment that would extend the term of the license agreement for Waggle Golf for one year. And the ending of that agreement would be on January 16th, 2027. Could I have this resolution read, please?
Resolution approving the First Amendment to the License Agreement with Waggle Golf LLC. This resolution introduced for adoption by Councilmember Peterson, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Quinn. Any comments or discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Quinn.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Canutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Resolution is approved, all ayes. And finally, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Madam Mayor, I would like to ask Councils to consider a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented A to Z.
Moved by Quinn, could I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Canutson. Could I have the roll call, please?
Peterson.
Aye.
Goodrich.
Aye.
Canutson.
Aye.
Vogelzang.
Aye.
Quinn.
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved, all ayes. And next item is the city administrator's report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would just like to note that we had a great reception for the mayor before this council meeting, and just encourage people to, to reach out to her as her tenure comes to an end here with the city of Corleville. I think one of the most impressive things to me was watching the slideshow, which we'll have, we'll put up on our TV station, too, of just all the things that have changed and happened over all those years, including over 100 proclamations that were made. So I just.
I didn't even know that.
A lot of changes that have made in our community. So thank you, Mayor, for your time here. This weekend is Isle of Lights. This is a great tradition for Corleville, lots of things happening. I think it's really cool. It kicks off Friday night with another community meal, and ends on Sunday night with the Isle of Lights and activities all around Corleville at different locations. So just go to corleville.org and see all the things that are happening this weekend for those activities. And then one of the things that our friends from Ukraine, or Josh didn't mention, is that a week from Thursday, on December 18, there will be an opportunity to see the Ukraine team, women's team wrestle the USA team. And it's at 6:30 at Extreme Arena. And one of the things that I think is really cool about this is absolutely free. And so you can come, you're encouraged to bring a food item that will be then donated to the Corleville Food Pantry, and that's your admission for the event. And even if you don't particularly like wrestling, or don't know anything about wrestling, it's just a fun time to come out and support these ladies from Ukraine and all that they have endured over many, many years. And last thing I'll just point out, sometimes these things that we do, grants and otherwise, it sounds like a long time. Next, next council meeting, we will have the closure of the new market tax credit program that was put into place that helped support the Extreme Arena. And so that was, had a seven-year time period, and that time has come to a conclusion. And so we will be closing that out at the next council meeting. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Mayor's report, I don't have a lot this evening. Just, you know, want to say thank you to everyone. Thank you to the folks that attended the reception, and thank you to the city staff, and the folks that helped organize it. I really appreciate it. I appreciate my colleagues a great deal. I love being the mayor. I love this community. I love public service. And this isn't my last meeting, the next meeting is my last meeting, so I'll just save the rest of it for, for that, for, for that meeting. But I just want to say thank you to everybody who, who came this evening and, and has supported me and trusted me over the last eight years, first as a council member and then as mayor. I'm not going to cry. I already did that, and I made it awkward. So I, I, I won't do it again, or I'll try not to, I don't know, no promises, we'll see. But anyway, thank you to everyone who, who has supported me over the years. And Isle of Lights, please, I hope you get the opportunity to, to come here to City Hall. What, this is one of my favorite things to do as mayor, is, is be here to help the community celebrate Isle of Lights, seeing all the kids, all the families. It's just so joyful, and it's such a beautiful time in our community. So I really encourage folks to, to come and, and celebrate with us here on Sunday. And that is all I have. City Attorney's Report.
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Committee and Councilmembers' report, let's start down at this end with Councilmember Canutson.
Well, thank you, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I thought you were missing the next meeting, so I guess, but I guess not, okay. That's good. We'll save those sentiments for later, I guess. I, I just have one announcement. I'll be out at the meeting on January 13th for, for health reasons. Take that opportunity to point out that if we did offer virtual meetings, which we have discussed, I would probably be able to participate in that manner. But I don't think I can be here in person on the 13th.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. All right, Councilmember Vogelzang.
Just want to re-echo, the Isle of Lights will be on Sunday. I know our street participates in it every year, and it's really kind of a pretty neat event. Anybody who wants to participate can get the bags, free bags, at the Rec Center, and sand is at the Aquatic Center. You need to bring your own bucket and shovel, though, to get your sand. Just a reminder, again, we, we do have snow, and I just would like to remind anybody that's in sight of a fire hydrant to take a little extra effort to make sure your fire hydrant's clear at least three feet around, surrounding the fire hydrant, as well as a path to the, to the sidewalk and to the street. Every second can make a difference with, if it's, for the firefires if it's ever needed, so. Last thing, talking about snow. Clear Creek Trail has been groomed for cross-country skiing, and for fat tire biking, and for snowshoeing. So anybody who's in the mood, you get out and get some exercise. There you go. So that is it.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Quinn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's see. So the City Circle White Christmas just opened at the CCPA. It's, they always put up a wonderful event. And so that run last weekend, and it will run again this weekend, the 12th, the 13th, the 14th. So if you have some time, you know, come and, and pay them a visit. Get yourself in the Christmas spirits, I guess. The library have a space, they renovated the space, I think, a couple years ago, and it's called, it's in the back, it's called a Make-A-Space. So I would encourage anyone in the community who have any skills that they would like to share with their neighbors to come and use to like that space. There has been some amazing thing happening in that space. I think just last week, someone taught folks how to make like a, like a, like a journal. And so you actually put things together and bind it, and, and make a journal that you can take home and use. So check it out. If you have skills to, to share, please contact the library and, and learn how to reserve that space and open it up to share skill with your neighbors. And last but not least is the community meal coming up this Friday. Is, we partner, well, the Rec Center partnered with the Food Pantry to host a December meal. It's going to take place at the Rec Center from 5 to 7. The menu is a summer grill taste in the heart of winter. And so come by for hamburgers, and, you know, cowboy caviar, and dessert made by your neighbors. There will be music and activities, and there will be books that purchased by the friends of the library that given out by the Teen Advisory Board. And so book for young adult, for, you know, children, for babies, and all of that. And the Rec Center will have a whole host of activities, and there will also be vaccine available, COVID and flu. However, because the company that we partner with cannot foot the bill, per se, and so if you have insurance, please bring those along. For COVID, you can get one if you have insurance. If you don't have insurance, they offer some flu vaccine for free. But if you do have insurance, that will help offset the cost for the company. And so hope to see everybody there on Friday. I know there's a boat to get flurry here. We always have a big snowstorm for some reason, you know, on the December meal, but somehow, some way, people showed up and eat together. So please come and eat with us. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, so was just, we were able, I don't think we've had a meeting since we did the IRP walkthrough, but that was very interesting, very exciting space for our community. What they're going to do with that restaurant, that, the IRP has been in the community forever, so I am so glad to see it move forward. The idea with the coffee shop and the walk-up and order, you know, for people that are bicycling and going over to the peninsula and the dog park, I think that's really cool, excited for that. Each year I've, since the last couple of years, I've been volunteering for the Isle of Lights, so each year I try to take a different role. Last year I walked with Kelly, we put him out and picked him up. And this year I'm going to drive the truck. Chose that option, so. But anyway, it, what a great time in our community. I've, I've met so many people that were just visiting our community and just by happenstance was here during that time, and, and they just love it. It is so beautiful what we've done with the strip and everything, you know. What a great place to be during Christmas, and, and what we do at the IRL as well, so. That's all I have, and look forward to seeing everybody on Christmas Eve, Eve, next meeting.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Goodrich.
I think you said everything, I think. So I want to thank the Streets Department in keeping our roads clean. And you mentioned the Iowa River Landing has a lot of activities this weekend, too. So check out everything on corleville.org. Enjoy the weekend, thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Moved by Vogelzang.
Second.
Seconded by Peterson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you, folks.